Okay, so if I can have a motion to certify our closed session that we discussed only Virginia, uh, one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven A one Personnel Appointments to Boards.
I move.
If I can have a roll call, please.
Ms. Cope?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Mr. Burchett?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to our Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Clontz, invocation by Councilman Cope.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll bow your heads, please. Father God, we give you thanks for our many blessings. We ask for wisdom and knowledge as we go forth in the town matters and decisions. Let our thoughts be on you in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, well, that would like to welcome all of our guests and visitors. It's a full house this evening, which is very nice to see. Appreciate everybody coming out. I'm gonna assume that that's because I'm up here and, and our Mayor Collins has had other engagements, but that's just what I'll tell him anyways. But thank you guys for being here and all the folks online as well. So, I asked for any modifications to public session?
Um, we will need to remove item six E, Building Department Update. Remove item seven B, um, reviewing and approving the proposed private drive of Ferry's Court. And then add resolution twenty-five dash thirty-seven before our public comment.
All righty, if I can have a motion for those changes?
I move.
And a roll call, please.
Ms. Cope?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Mr. Burchett?
Aye.
All right, well, that will bring us to our first presentation of this evening. We have a few, and I'll ask for Pulaski Area Transit. Monica, music come up.
Good afternoon. So Jennifer's gonna join me tonight because she's gonna talk about budgets after I finish. I hope you all are doing well tonight. So we finished up our FY twenty-five year with a total of thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety riders. That was an increase over twenty-four by three thousand forty-eight. So we're continuing to grow ridership, which is, is our goal. In our FY twenty-six year, we just started that on October the first, adding some stops, um, in the, in the town of Pulaski to, um, some of our routes. And as we talked last month, we still can't see how much of a savings that will, will make. However, we're hoping that we'll be able to see some savings in that, especially cutting out that one route to Christiansburg. And just be mindful too, that we're, we still know that we're in a shortfall in, in this year, and we'll continue to monitor, monitor that. Jennifer and I watch the budgets monthly, and if, you know, we'll continue to work with DRPT on that and to keep you all posted if, if we see that we may have to make some changes in this year. It's our goal to keep, um, serving the town residents so that they can continue to be able to get to the places that they need to go here in the town of Pulaski during the current year and our FY twenty-seven year. For our twenty-twenty-seven budget year, we're gonna be, uh, requesting seven hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for our operating budget. And again, that grant opens December first, and it's due February first. The town requesting matching funds for that for the twenty-seven year would be seventy-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars just for the operating in the town of Pulaski for local match. And again, these funds are requested yearly to help keep Pulaski Transit going and to keep our match money going, um, for this, for the matching funds. As Jennifer and I went to the DRPT meeting a couple of weeks ago, we've also learned there are some changes coming down the pipeline from DRPT. The biggest thing that we learned is currently we get fifty percent funds from federal, and that's now going to be switched over in the twenty-seven year to be fifty percent state, and then we'll see how to, kinda see what the federal gives. They were very hopeful that that'll just be switching. So hopefully, everything should stay the same. The match percentage should still be pretty close to what it is now. However, replacement vehicles is gonna look a little different after the twenty-seven year. Currently, we pay four percent match on all vehicles, replacement vehicles that we get. And DRPT's telling us that moving forward into twenty-eight and continuing forward, that match could be ten percent or even higher because of their, their, the way their funding is looking. So they'll keep us in the loop of what's going on with that. For the twenty-seven year, we can request three replacement vehicles. Uh, and again, we can talk about that. We have two twenty-nineteens, one has a hundred and forty-two thousand miles, one has a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and then the other replacement vehicle that we would want to replace would be the totaled vehicle. And again, with that, then we would also ask, um, the towns, um, support and matching funds for those replacement vehicles. We also will be putting in another spare parts grant for sixty thousand. As we've, um, come to see over the, this past year, that spare grants part has helped us out tremendously because we've replaced three motors in vehicles. So that has, uh, been a huge help to us. And again, when we do the replacement vehicles, we'll continue to send the email out to Todd and to you all to see if the town of Pulaski will want to purchase those vehicles first. And if not, then we'll put them on the GovDeals site and sell them. We'll continue to have our annual golf tournament. I haven't set the date for that yet, but usually, uh, May or June, we'll have that golf tournament. And the funds of that will also be put forwards to the local match. And again, as I said, grants are due February first. However, we need to submit our grants this year by January twenty-first, as at the end of the month, we'll be, um, out of town. So we have to make sure that we get those submitted early. Do y'all have any questions before I send it over to Jennifer to talk some more into details about budgets?
I do have a question. One of your vehicles that you're able, you get three for the request, is one of those the ones that was totaled out?
Yes.
So we get that extra?
Yes. Yeah. And again, even if we request three and we get, we may or may not get approved for all three, and then at the times that we're, that they are approved, they still ask us, do we want to accept all three of them before, before we say yes to that?
And when you guys are replacing vehicles, then you, in return, you sell the old vehicle on, on Gov, uh, deals. The money that's, um, that you're paid off of the sale of those vehicles, does it go towards the local match?
Yes.
So if, how much is the four percent match on a vehicle, just generally?
So I just got the new quote. The new quote is a hundred and forty-one thousand for the, um, for the new vehicle. So it's actually a hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So the four percent match would be fifty-six hundred dollars.
And so the amount that you would get out of selling a vehicle typically, is it around that amount, or?
So it had been prior to these vans that we just sold. And the reason for that was being, was they all needed work. So we didn't, we didn't sell them at enough to even have the match funds for, for the vehicle, the three new vehicles that we just got.
Two of the three sold in sixty-seven fifty for two.
Two, uh, two of them together was sixty-seven fifty?
Yes. And the other one I just listed again, 'cause it did not sell.
So that would cover the cost of half of the local match?
And lots of times, they do sell good, but unfortunately, because these vans needed work, that we didn't put the work into to, to sell them, so.
I have a question, Monica. Who, who specs out the vehicles? And the reason why I'm asking is, I mean, if we've had, would you say, two or three engine failures somewhat, I would say premature?
So they really weren't premature because our, the vehicle lifespan, um, so we get our vehicles from DRPT, which is on state contract, um, Sonny Mayor, we get our vehicles from Sonny Mayorman, which is on state contract with DRPT. And right now, they're the only people on their procurement through DRPT. So their lifespan is four years and a hundred thousand miles. However, most of our vehicles, well, until we got replacements, are on their five and six years. So it's not that, and then, and we have, I mean, the one that's up, that we could replace now has almost a hundred and fifty thousand on it.
Okay.
We just kinda got a little behind one year when we couldn't get replaced.
That's interesting. The reason why I say that, uh, the, the system, all systems normally require minimum of three quotes, but you've got, you've got the system buying buses and only have one supplier. Did I understand that correctly?
On the state contract?
Yeah. I mean, it's nothing for you guys to deal with, but I...
So they also talked, they did talk about that at our training a couple of weeks ago that we went to, and there's nobody else on that, on that bid list right now, unfortunately.
Thank you.
So if we have a van that's dilapidated and needing replaced, and we're not getting much for it at all, would it be better just to leave it as a, a backup in case another one gets totaled or motor blows or something? Would it be cheaper just to get one that's half running, running, instead of not having one?
Unfortunately, motors right now are costing fifteen thousand dollars. So...
So if we have the spare parts, then it could be possible?
And one of them, that's actually, um, one that needs a motor is the one that's on the repair list. So if we're able to get some additional funding from DRPT right now that we've requested, then that vehicle, um, wouldn't be replaced. And then, but then that, then that puts that lifespan of that vehicle out a couple of years because that kinda refurbishes its life. So then it, so then next year, I wouldn't be able to replace that vehicle. It would have to have its new useful life.
Monica, when did y'all start physical?
October first.
October. Uh, your, your formal request tonight is just the seventy-nine two sixty-two for budget?
Correct.
Okay. You, you mentioned some other numbers, like the four percent came to fifty-six hundred per vehicle? Will you come back at later date, or is that on the table tonight too?
Um, so we would also, we would need to go ahead and request that, just so that we knew, um, how, like how, if we could ask for those in our budget. And then, once that's approved in late May, early June, then we would know what we got awarded.
Okay.
And then at that time.
So it would be the seventy-nine two sixty-two plus fifty-six times three, is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anything else before Jennifer speaks on budgets?
And this may be in Jennifer's part, but I, you had mentioned that you were still wearing, running a current shortfall for this year. Do y'all know what that amount is?
Well, that, I was gonna mention that we are working to do a revised budget because we already see some savings on certain line items, as you can see in that year-end report. So we're gonna do the revised budget, present it to our board in January, and so we'll have that at the next meeting. That will reduce the match and, and the shortfall, hopefully, based on the twenty-five expenses.
But now, when, I will say that when she say, says at the next meeting, that depends on when we come back here, because our next board meeting is not till the end of January.
February.
Yes. So we will have to have a vote on this, so I don't know if y'all are prepared to vote tonight, or if you, um, need us to come back. Sorry.
Uh, I think a formal vote will need to wait till our next meeting, you know, now that the information's been presented.
Okay.
December second.
Was that total ninety-six thousand, right?
Okay.
Did you, okay.
Yeah, it's covered.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, one more question, Monica. I'm sorry. So, um, I'm still pretending like I'm playing my rookie card, so I can get away with a little bit of it. These, the, the fifty-six hundred per van, how often is that typically? So you probably mentioned it, not that I can catch it.
How often is it what?
The fifty-six hundred, so you'll get three of them, is that correct?
Yes, if we were, if we were replacing vehicles, yes.
How long will it be before, what, what's your target on those, every five, four years, three years, or?
Right now, it's four years, a hundred thousand miles. However, at the training we went to, starting in twenty-five, they might up that.
Okay. Okay. One more question, and I'll leave you alone. Are, are they diesel or gas?
They're gas.
Thank you.
But, and just to clarify, I think, Todd may have been asking, you, you request vehicles each year?
So, yes, we do. We, so as long as a vehicle is four years old right now and has a hundred thousand miles, we do like...
Okay. So you got three that, that will obviously be replaced in a hundred thousand miles, but okay, so that goes, but how many's in your cycle? How, how many do you have?
Yeah, right now, the time I got to.
Okay. I got you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that'll bring us to our second, uh, presentation tonight. Will be Rest and Rise Overnight Winter Shelter, Reverend Terry Sternberg.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. It's good to see you all. Thank you for this privilege for us to make a presentation. Let me pull up my, my slides, so I have my notes in my head on. So I'm Terry Sternberg, and I am currently the, um, kind of the convener or ad hoc chair of the Pulaski County Ministerial Association. I've been with the association for the thirty years. I've been in Pulaski now as a pastor of a local church. And, um, we had a meeting recently to look at Rest and Rise Pulaski as a venture for helping our unhoused people get through these coldest winter months with somewhere to lay down their head at night and rise for a good day the next day. And when we had an information meeting with church folk, um, in the community, in the county, if you were at that meeting, if you wouldn't mind, just let the folks know, like, that you're already a part of this thinking and planning that we're doing for Rest and Rise. So we have a number of church representatives here that were in part of the information meeting, so they could be educated, informed as to what kind of program we are planning and what kind of help they can do. So Rest and Rise Pulaski is the name of this, uh, pro, program. It is purely a church, uh, faith-based organizational project, and, uh, we've, um, got a little planning group that's been working on this, uh, with the Ministerial Association. And we, um, developed our mission statement, let me get you this slide here, which says that our mission is rooted in faith and service. Rest and Rise Pulaski exists to provide warm, safe, and, uh, and welcoming overnight accommodations for single adults who are unhoused during the coldest months of the year. It's our mission to meet people where they are, provide safety and comfort, connect them with care, encouragement, and resources to rise toward a brighter future. I'm encouraged, in a way, by the kind of synchronicity between what our vision is and what the Pulaski slide you have up here every time you meet. Pulaski is where your new path begins. And the purpose of our wanting to help people who are unhoused get through the, the winter safely is to be able to help them discover their new path in their, in their journey. Now, let me tell you a little bit about the scope of this service, this Rest and Rise Pulaski. It is Pulaski-centric. It's going to happen in Pulaski for Pulaski people, okay? The goal is for us to be able to accommodate up to ten people per night in a single open space, which allows us for optimal security and safety, um, and supervision in a church's facility, like a fellowship hall. And each guest that comes is guaranteed a spot night after night for the duration of the season, as long as they are needing and using the space, um, from night to night. So there, there's a guarantee, which creates a nice hot continuity of care for our folks. We will be having shower and laundry, um, services provided by our local partners, such as First Methodist. The YMCA is helping us with some showers, and we have a church group who's willing to help with all the laundering, uh, with our guests, not for them, but with them. We plan to open up each evening around six PM for the folks to come in and leave by seven AM. The host churches are all located in our downtown area. We are highly networked as a church. We have churches all within about a block of each other. We're gonna First Christian, Trinity Lutheran, Christ Episcopal, First Presbyterian, First Methodist. As you know, we're all within a block of each other, right downtown. So these host churches are signing on to be the folks who will house the folks each night in their fellowship hall on a rotational basis. We're looking at either one or two weeks at a time between rotation within each church. We planned to have this happening, um, from about December fourteenth is our planned opening. It's a Sunday through the middle of March. And it's prog, the program is designed, really, truly, y'all, to help reduce homelessness in our community. And the way we can do that through this particular kind of accommodating and, and place for people to stay is to provide really good supports for them on their journey towards self-sufficiency. So we're looking at this as not a Band-Aid caregiving, but a self-sufficiency and sustainable development program. Now, what this program is based on is a program, what's called, um, To Our House. Are you all familiar with Montgomery County's To Our House program? It uses the same idea of churches taking turns through a twenty-week season, November one through the end of, uh, March, and they are already up and running, and they've been in operation for sixteen years. So we're going to be using their program specifics to model our program because they have worked out all the bugs, and they know how to do this. And so we're going to model our program after theirs. It has a history of positive outcomes. As the guests come in and stay as, for as many as perhaps five months, um, they're able to get wraparound services while they're in the To Our House program. Because all of the work from To Our House, which is a New River Community Action program, incorporates case management, housing counselors, um, a good record-keeping system intake that is, um, able to help do some screening of people. And so we're going to model our program on that, uh, To Our House program. Rest and Rise in Pulaski will rely for now entirely on trained volunteers from our churches and other groups or individuals for overnight supervision, as well as providing hot meal, breakfast, and bag lunches for our guests, along with fellowship and perhaps some activities of an evening. So that's the foundation for what we are planning. Just very quickly, the benefits of Rest and Rise Pulaski are that people who are strictly unhoused have nowhere to stay overnight, anywhere, um, have nowhere to go for the night. They will have a warm, safe, and overnight stay. They will be able to have hot meals and basic, you know, personal care essentials. They will receive compassionate volunteers with faith-based support and compassion, and they'll have a connection to the community and housing resources, which will help give them the support they need to discover their new path, or their better path, perhaps. Uh, just another quick, uh, piece of information for y'all, that our volunteers will receive training so that they will know, um, how to see the guests through the night. We'll have clear Rolex descriptions for our volunteers. They will receive team support and communication. We plan to have about four of us, uh, myself, Judith, um, Ernie, um, and, and some others to be hopefully named to be the staff, so to speak, to be the resource people, for the supervisors to call in case of something coming up that they need a little bit of, uh, help with. And so they'll have team support. We keep good records with community action flowing back and forth from day to day, uh, as far as where these beds stand. And we have the opportunity to serve with compassion and purpose. This is something that the Ministerial Association's been planning to accomplish all this year. We've, we've seen the need as of last winter's, uh, cold weather emergency temporary sheltering that we did at City of Refuge, and we said, let's not wait and make this thing a big fat emergency. Let's do some good planning and strategic work right now. So we've been working on this for quite a while. And I guess the last thing, um, you might like to know is that, um, because I tend to get busy doing all kinds of things in the community, I said, I need a few people to help me stay on task and stay on target with this thing. And, uh, so I was able to, uh, request and receive the help of, um, Patricia Wheaton and Pamela Edwards from Instill Mindfulness. These are folks that are working very, very closely with the members of our community who are unhoused, doing peer recovery support, um, just a lot of mindfulness teaching, engagement, and things like that. So they are super helpful to the Ministerial Association to kinda get a feel for, uh, who's who and what's what in the community. Regina Gallimore Zruckman is, uh, part of the Free Store in Pulaski, as well as the Care Portal. And these, again, are folks who kinda know what the law, the needs of our, members of our community are. And Ernie Wallace was super helpful to me last year when we were doing the temporary emergency shelter from Pres, First Press. So those are the folks in town that have been keeping this train on track and helping us get to where, uh, we wanna be when the cold weather really starts to hit us. So that's our, um, basic brief presentation, and I wanna just say thank you for letting us share. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this gonna be only for, sorry, Brooks? Is this only for singles, Terry?
Yes.
No children, no?
Right, correct. We do have, in the New River Valley, provisions for families with children, sheltering, but we don't have enough capacity for individuals.
Will you provide security at these places also, or do you feel like?
Security as in?
Any type of, if you'd needed it to maybe not entrance or exit, whatever you needed?
We'll have at least two volunteers per night to, you know, manage the ten people that, you know, we may not even max out at ten. When we were at the C, City of Refuge, a lot of nights, we had four or five, six people. Now, uh, Instill was doing some housing of unhoused people at the Budget Inn for a month, and so there were a few people already being cared for there. But when we were doing night after night for the coldest nights, we, we had about, we never maxed out over like ten people. So we're expecting to start with ten this year is our max, and everybody has kinda their little personal, um, sleep space in this setup. This is what we're doing from To Our House. Their, their tried and true method, so we're going to have, um, a really comfortable setting for our folks to just get a really good night's rest, so they can spend the next day not having to think about survivalism as much as, what do I need to be doing today to, to get my life really going on track? So it's a good program. I'm very, very glad that New River Community Action's gonna be helping us. Our New River Community Action Center in Pulaski is aware of what we're doing, as well as the Radford Main Office. We're working very closely with each other. So it's faith-based in Pulaski, but it's very well supported by an, an infrastructure that will really help us do a good job for our people. And we get, good news is, we are not asking you for any money.
I did have a couple of questions. So as we've gone through this in the past, I've, I've always understood, and I, so I could be incorrect on some part about this, and may need, I guess, maybe additional information, but there's always been a difference between, or as I understood, a difference between a shelter and a warming station. Shelter being a more, you know, permanent facility, you know, that was, uh, zoned that way, or had the, uh, you know, special exceptions necessary to, you know, run and operate that way, you know, through the, you know, whatever appropriate approvals, you know, for those processes. And then the warming station, which I think is along the lines of what you're describing, is, functions under an emergency, uh, situation, a procedure policy for, for those nights where, um, it is imperative, you know, that, you know, that we, you know, do these types of things, or a community does these types of things, as I suppose, at this point in time, taking it to the streets, and I know the central gym locations, you described, uh, uh, city of... And I know the central gym locations, you described the City of Refuge last year, I think, functioned under those things. But, but they did function under a procedure of emergency temperature requirements. And I can't remember specifically what they were. But there was a, basically an approval process just to make sure that, that they, you know, that everything functioned, you know, fairly and equally, you know, within, you know, within the, without violating, I guess, you know, zoning that's in place. That's the way I understood it. So there, there seems to be a little bit of, unless I've misunderstood you, in between that emergency needs, you're, you're looking to function, you know, this program 100% through that entire timeframe? Or is it just for the emergency moments?
Well, okay, number one, we've not done this before. We do know from the history of To Our House that they do plan on a 20-week season for cold weather sheltering, for getting people out of possible seriously cold weather. We had that last week. Thankfully, we have people who go around the town of Pulaski and make sure nobody needed to be put up that night. And that mean, that we are, we have people driving through the town, asking the people we know that are staying out in the cold whether they needed to be in a shelter last Tuesday night when it was 20 degrees or less. So this program is sort of like, number one, it's, it's all church property managed, okay? So it's all happening in church properties, in a way no differently than us housing groups who come through to volunteer for, caring for tornado relief. All these churches have had opportunities to have people sleeping in their basements or fellowship halls, et cetera. So it's, it's no really different from that, okay, in terms of accommodating people for their particular needs. The definitely, the winter season is on us and it's, and probably from mid-December until sometime toward March, we're going to be dealing with sub-freezing or at least definitely below 40-degree temperatures. So we're just expecting that people are going to need to get out of that cold weather. But the To Our House model, rather than basing their decision night by night by the temperature, which is the warming station's operating method, by doing the continuous bedding, you know, accommodations for guests each night, when they're guaranteed getting off the ground, off the homeless environment. These are people who don't have anywhere to double up, any couch to flop on, nowhere to go, okay? So they're, they're in desperate straits for, they're living, they're surviving. The more continuity they have day to day to day, for they know they've got a place to go that night, the brain can stop scrambling for survival work and move into learning, growing, thinking, planning. The brain needs that break, that rest, so they can rise. And we're also going to be working with our guests to be looking at ways in which every day they can find a meaningful plugin for volunteering, community service, learning some skills, contributing in some way to the community. So as you can see, warming station isn't completely what we're doing. Neither is it a year-round shelter. It is winter overnight care. But it is providing the, the kind of continuity that we have learned produces the best outcomes for people. And when you talk about where your new path begins, friends, this is integral to that happening. Because we have folks that are living so desperately in survival mode. So I don't know if that helps you. It is all happening in church buildings. It's not going to be the bingo hall one minute and the, you know, it's going to all be in the church facilities where we've done a lot of overnight accommodations for people. So what about zoning? I don't really know what to tell you.
What, y'all have clearly done amazing work and, and put a lot of thought into it. So it's, it's not a question about?
Yeah, I get your question.
It's not a question about, you know, how you can't do it. It's, it's a, it's a question about making sure that the program that you're going to run is, we've got to make sure it moves through if there's any steps that it needs to move through to be allowed in that space and whatever rules and guidelines need to be in place that it, that we get you through that process is, I guess is what I'm thinking. And I, and maybe there's nothing.
Okay.
You know, but there, but there very well may be because I, and I completely, church is the absolute perfect place, you know, for, for, you know, for, you know, for this. But, but churches still have adjacent property owners, you know, who have rights, you know, that we're responsible for, you know, making sure that we hear them out if it does violate some type of zoning in those areas. And I don't, not saying that it does. I'm just saying if there's a process that needs to be gone through for, you know, for something outside of the emergency, you know, needs, you know, warming station situation that's set up. And maybe there's something that needs to be looked at with that program. I just know that up to this point, that's where we've been. And so I think, I think we need to, I think we need to get you guys, you know, and, and Todd or, you know, and to really make sure that we're, that as you guys try and move forward, that there's not any, you know, boxes that we need to check, you know, so we don't end up, you know, so you don't end up in a situation where
Yeah.
there's something, a step that got missed in the process. As y'all move forward and obviously, you know, you know, as you describe the dates, those dates are fastly approaching. And it sounds like that if I'm anywhere close to correct, that sounds like conversations that need to be had, you know, quickly.
And there could be some emergency needs between now and December 14th because of weather drops. So like we were thinking, we were going to have to do something last week for people that needed to get out of.
Well, and currently up to this point, I think, you know, again, unless I'm misspeaking, I think there's procedure in place for how that's supposed to function.
Okay.
You know, and, and it's probably been a couple of years ago since the conversation. I'm doing my best to recall.
Yeah, I hear you.
You know, that, but.
I can add to it. I see you looking at me.
Well, I was hoping, I was hoping you could save me because I'm drowning.
Well, so let me, let me add to it. So first of all, I've got to try to lighten up the atmosphere a little bit. I got to tell the story. I had a conversation. I've talked to a bunch of wonderful, I've talked to Jennifer Smith, I've talked to Terry, I've talked to Brad Wright with the county, I've talked to my attorney. And yeah, so it's been an interesting day. I will say, Terry, that had I known that all this paperwork was in existence, I probably would have communicated better with you, but I didn't. I've always said you got to live through it before you can fix it. You got to live through anything before you can fix it. So it was just my introduction. But I can tell you that on, there was an ordinance on, it was in 23, prior to my employment. There are third ordinance and it recognized, and the attorney for the first time just read it, but it recognizes houses of worship for, for what we feel like is, is this type of facility. However, being that you're in the political jurisdiction of the town of Pulaski, there are some minimum easy guidelines that we are hailed to by different board called a building, the Commonwealth. It's not something that we selectively do. But council did back in 2022 authorize a 40-degree temperature vice chair, Vice Mayor, 40-degree temperature and, and dropping. So that was just a, that was a practice that you had back then. I'm not saying it's a written criteria at all, because it's not. And also the building, the building inspection, the building code inspector, Terry, and you and I spoke about that earlier today. I also feel like that there is a clear and imperative difference between state and church. And I believe that the church has probably got more flexibility to operate within a realm than local government does. So I envy you for that. We, every time we try to do something, we got to jump through all kind of hurdles. We got to talk to the planning commission. I got to have conversations with the mayor. The mayor's got to talk to the council. It just takes forever for us to accomplish anything. So I'm going to put my attorney on the spot. He doesn't know it's coming, but you know, and, and, you know, this went through the planning commission before, Scott. And had I known it, I would have encouraged Terry then. That don't mean we can't now. I think the planning commission has set a, a standard here that council has adopted in the past. And they actually have an ordinance. And I don't know if there's any difference between state and church, and, and I know there's a difference. But when it comes to their requests tonight, I feel like they, they dotted their i's and crossed t's. But you can over rank that, so.
I'll give you a standard lawyer answer is it depends. I need to read this stuff and figure out, is there some kind of process you need to follow based on these amendments to the zoning ordinance that took place the past few years to understand what did they approve or allow? And then if you fit that mold, then what do we have to do to say you're allowed, right? So that's, I just need to review it. We'll try to do that as quickly as we can.
Now, I told Terry, and I'm guilty of this, and I'll go on record to say it, but I would have just done it. But when you bring it before local government, there's a level of responsibility that we have. And it kind of puts a different aspect. And obviously, my attorney has done exactly what I figured he would do. So I would recommend that you pursue, you say December 14th, and I will be in touch with you between now and then. And I feel like, I feel like we'll get there, so.
Well, let me just say that our presentation tonight really is are honoring you all as leaders of our community because we do feel like we have this mission upon us to do as a faith-based community. And we do feel like we've been given a pretty much of a thumbs up from the leadership. Maybe not looking at all the little minutia of the zoning laws and things, but we, we understand all that. But we really are loving the partnership we're forming with so many people in our community. Faith-based, secular groups that are doing humanity work with human services, the town leadership. The fact that some of you all have actually stayed in the, in that cold weather shelter last year to spend the night to be there for folks. You have law enforcement working with the town leadership to do the project recovery within the Pulaski community. We have business people who aren't quick to call the police when somebody's needing to get out of the weather and have somewhere to sit and stay while they're without a home. And so we're wonderfully excited about this opportunity to really lift up our members of our community. So if you can see it in that particular kind of light of, of building capacity, building human capacity, making people indeed enjoy that, that, that path of the uprise, I think it's just going to be great. So we really just kind of wanted to let you all know what we're doing. And whatever we need to do to comply with making sure the buildings are up to code or whatever, we'll certainly do it. We get inspected in our churches. We know where we've needed to put a tile back in the ceiling and things like that. So I think we shouldn't have any real trouble with safe operation of this overnight adult.
Y'all are totally self-sufficient, Greg.
Yes, yes. Well, we are getting some help from the opioid abatement authority in terms of buying some of the supplies for the sleeping setup and all. But yeah, we're not, we don't, we're, we're looking at a really promising year. And let me just close by saying the response that we, we put out there to the, to the world last year, we need people to stay the night, two people, and people to bring a hot meal and a bag lunch for the nights that we were monitoring cold weather and being open, open, open as we needed to. I wish you could have seen the sign-up genius. I just put a sign-up genius out there and it was being filled in, filled in, filled in, filled in, filled in. We live in a great community of caring. And so we're really just trying to widen, widen the resource support for our people by doing this.
Just have a question or two?
Sure, yes, sir.
I'm not sure I understood your response to Brooks.
Yes, sir.
I think you asked, is there a difference between a warming station and a shelter? And what was your answer?
Yes, there is a difference. Uh huh. And, but the thing is.
And what is the difference?
Well, the shelter, sheltering, you know, I think there's a lot of variety in what makes a shelter, okay? There's going to be day shelter, night shelter, 24-hour day shelter. That's not what this is.
I guess I would ask it, maybe rephrase it a different way. From a legal standpoint, what, I'm really not sure, other than just to make us informed as to what you're looking to do, did you come to ask our vote of concurrence, acceptance?
Okay.
Or just to make us aware? And the reason why I really asked the question, when I came in and sat down, I had two presentations. One of them was on the 14th of November, and it had words like shelter on it. And then there's a new one, I guess revised one, that references to shelter have been removed. Doesn't say anything about shelter. So I just wondered why, why the change.
Well, because shelter for the, for a lot of communities and a lot of town council leaders and things like that, the word shelter can make people nervous.
Bad connotation.
And so I was kind of given a bit of a coaching that says, you know, maybe just think about the words we use. Now, technically, this is a sheltering program overnight. It's an overnight sheltering program. Warming stations tend to be come in out of the cold during the day, not necessarily at night, okay? So we're making a distinction in the function. But the words, the semantics really don't matter a great deal. We are putting people up overnight. We're accommodating homeless people overnight to get them out of the cold into buildings that are warm and safe. So call it what you will. Call it a shelter, call it a warming.
Yeah, I just wondered why you, someone encouraged you to remove the word shelter.
Just because we recognize that for some people, it's kind of a sensitive.
I want you to know I do appreciate your concern for the people.
Yes, thank you. And you too. Thank you. Because I know you all share that. Yeah, I hope I haven't taken too, too much of your time. But thank you. Good?
What is the process, if there is an ordinance that, that's against this, what's the process for getting an ordinance changed or removed? It may not get the four votes, but at least it could be brought up again that, hey, maybe this isn't serving.
It would typically go before the planning commission first. And the planning commission would do due diligence on, depending on what type of ordinance it is, a recommendation would come back to council. Some of them take public hearing, some of them don't. So it could be a lengthy process. I, I'll say first of all, my re, my research in the code book, there's nothing there other than the ordinance at hand. That, somebody might say, well, you missed this, and they could be right. So I haven't seen anything out there other than the building code that we adopted that's overseen by the Commonwealth of Virginia. So it's not something that we choose to do. So over, oversight of buildings is a department that we have and we are bound by the Commonwealth of Virginia to uphold it. And that's a, that's a, for a, a long, vast, deep conversation. So when it comes to shelters on the private sector and church, they're absolutely different. If it was a private entity doing this, we would look at it totally different. So I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to find some leeway here because it is a church. And I haven't got there yet, but as I told Terry, proceed forward and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, Bill.
And what would be the difference, because I haven't seen the ordinance? So if a church youth group wanted to have a lock-in?
Right.
So that's putting people in a building overnight, giving them food and cutting them loose the next day. So what is, what would be the difference in an ordinance that would prohibit having an unhoused person in a church overnight versus a teen youth group or an evangelist or something like that?
I'm going to be as transparent as I can. That entity that's having that overnight sleepover is not going to come right here. That's as transparent as I can be. So when you bring it before a govern on an open platform, it just, it introduced obviously transparency, but it also fires up responsibilities for the locality. So I'm not saying there is a difference, and I hope that answered your question, but yeah.
So what is our path forward? You're going to have?
I'm going to talk to our attorney and we're going to dig into it. And my, my objective is try to find a door for to operate and proceed forward and also protect the citizens of Pulaski and obviously the governing body.
I think the easy way is just don't enforce the ordinance.
Yeah, I understand. I mean. Yeah, I understand. I understand.
It's discretion.
Right.
Well, it's not exactly, because at that point in time, you also can't enforce the ordinance anywhere else. And so.
Actually, the ordinance, in my opinion, has given them an, an open door.
I didn't think it was keeping them from it.
If I didn't enforce the ordinance, they wouldn't have the ability to operate. So I think enforcing the ordinance is what's, is what's saving them. So just my opinion. I understand there's different views of that, but. Yeah. So the ordinance clearly says worship. I mean, for warming, I mean, it clearly states that. So there's other things that fall in behind it that we're responsible for because it came right here. So I think the ordinance is, is helping, helping them become a reality with their program. So you'll talk with Mr. Farland? Yeah, I'll get with Mr. Farland. We'll proceed forward. And then get back with the. Absolutely, absolutely. And it may be, again, because it's here, the planning commission has set a, has set a standard of operating here that, that, that we'll be evaluating, and hopefully we can chime in behind that. But it, it may need to go back to the planning commission. We'll just, we'll have to look at it. I told, I, I've got, I'm, again, I'm trying to lighten the atmosphere up again. I had a conversation with Terry this morning. And there were so, there's so many good people in the community, and a lot of you're in this room that are, that are trying to do what we don't have time at the local level to do. So I made a comment, you know, I've got 99 problems, this is not one. And we hung the phone up. And I got to thinking, I wonder how she heard that, you know, so. And just for clarity, Terry, what I was trying to say is you, you've got a, you've got a great team of people. I should be able to move on to, to other things. I wasn't trying to be a little your program at all, but so anyway. Hope that answered your question. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you're doing and your group. You, you really are trying to do this the right way. And I think in what Todd's trying to do there by defining what specifically, you know, is gonna, you know, allows the framework for this to function the way that you're trying to function. And also, in a way, protects what the work that you guys are trying to do. And so we, we just need to make sure that though, that that is clearly able to be defined, so that way it can be defended.
What, what we want to do in the future, if, and God forbid, anything were to happen, anybody could say, well, it came before you, and you approved it.
We're really just trying to collaborate. That's the main thing. Collaborating and sharing information.
All right. That will bring us to our third presentation for the Pulaski Interceptor Project update from Stephen Steele, Vice President of Key Accounts Management, CHA.
So while Stevie's coming up, the, the reason I wanted Stevie to come to the meeting tonight, it, it's just, it's, it's still, the plate is still hot with information. It's how, it was just late in the last week that, that we learned that after a decade, a matter of fact, two decades, the operation of funding entities changed. So I have created rate hikes on both water and sewer to address capital improvement projects, and they're still in place, and they're still in play. However, the communication with the state and the localities have dramatically changed. And having Stephen here, who I'm gonna blame everything on, cause we're paying him a lot of money as our engineer to explain what's going on, I think will fall on more receiving ears than hearing it from me, sir.
And when I get called Stephen Todd, I am usually in trouble. Stevie Steele, so. My name's Stevie Steele. For those of you that have not had a chance to meet me, I have been an engineer for 28 years. I grew up and now live in Giles County, just over the line. Spent a lot of my life here for sports and things of that nature, and enjoy this community and all the things I just heard. And I'm glad to be part of keeping things moving on the utility side. So as Todd mentioned, this time last year, we embarked upon putting together a plan to address some major failures in the Pulaski Sewer Interceptor. And we came up with a plan that included rehabilitation of that. The project cost is 6.6 million. We came before council and got approval to move forward to find some funding that would match the revenue generated from the proposed rate hikes that Todd's talking about. And so as he mentioned, that announcement came through. So to give some context of what he said, the last 20 years that I've been doing this, when DQ gave the announcement of your award, it included what amount of grant you were gonna get, as well as what kind of loan package you were gonna get. That all happened this time every single year. So when that announcement was made, councils and leaders immediately knew exactly what they had to pay back. They knew whether that fit with their rate revenue generation. They could decide whether to move forward or not move forward. This year, between the government shutdown and BIL money flooding the market, my entire universe has been a absolute wreck for about three years. And so they have struggled. They are still putting money out, and they are still a good source to fund projects like this. Having said that, they don't talk to each other, and I'm probably gonna be in trouble if they're listening to this. They don't talk to each other like they should. EPA is the funding arm for the grant portion of that program. So this year, the EPA money got delayed. So the only thing they could announce at this time is how much loan you're gonna get, and whether that's 0% low interest, and how long that rate term is gonna be. However, if you qualify, which the town does, in this meeting, they also said, we will be telling you how much grant you're gonna get in June of 2026. So what's the big deal, right? We just wait till June 2026? See how much grant you get and see if you wanna move forward. The next sentence is, if you want this money, you have to be out to bid by November of '26.
It's gotta be shovel-ready.
Ready to go. Which means if we do that, Todd's gonna call me on June 1st and say you have three months to design a $6 million project and get it on the street. And it's not gonna happen. So what is our path moving forward? We're, we're trying to communicate with DQ and say, look, this is, this is a tough ask that you're giving communities, and this is happening everywhere. Everybody opened their letter, started cheering, and then saw this caveat. And they're like, um, okay, what do we do? We can't move forward at risk. So the nature of this project allows the town and its partners to move forward and not be at risk. And so what does that mean? That means that the rates were raised to cover a certain amount of loan, and the loan is 0%. So it's as good a funding package as you're gonna get on the loan side. So you're essentially paying yourself back. And at 0%, as rates keep increasing over 20 years, you're gonna end up beating, and that money's gonna be worth more than it is today. So a standard project, let's call that a pump station, that has to have a wet well, a pump station, an electrical box, all that has to exist for that project to be built. If we were building that kind of project, I would tell you that if you move forward and you have to have that grant money to do the whole project, and you do it now, you would be moving forward at risk. Cause you would not know until June if you were gonna have enough grant money to do the whole thing. This project is a sewer rehabilitation project. So we can do as much of that work as you can afford. And if you get the grant money, we just do more sewer rehabilitation work. If you don't get the grant, you only do what your rate increase will cover. So you can move forward now, and we only do a project that the rates revenue can cover. If you get a bunch of grant money in June, then we add more work to utilize that, that grant funding. And so I'm here today to, to recommend from the engineering consulting side, and my expertise is DQ funding, VDH. I've been here talking about the water treatment plant as well. This is as good an offer as you're gonna get, and if you get grant money, that only gets better. So I need to start designing this very quickly. So today, all of the applications that got accepted, so there were 22 applications total that went in for a total of $475 million requested across the entire state of Virginia. The town was part of, one of 22 that got accepted. And what's giving you an opportunity to have grant is because you were granted hardship status, which means that you are either in a demographic that qualifies you and/or you are charging enough in your rate to show these loan application people that you deserve to get some extra help because you are charging what you should and then some. Everywhere else I work that has kept their rates super low, they can't get grant money, and they don't know why. Because you're not gonna get grant money if you're not already doing as much as you can to take care of yourself first. So this is a message to the citizens that you are doing that. You wouldn't be getting the chance to get grant money unless your rates were already at or exceeding what was expected of you based on your median household income. So I guess to summarize, what Todd wants to make sure we are totally clear about is, traditionally, you would know the whole package of what you're getting ready to get into. What, what amount is loan and what amount is grant? If we needed that entire amount to bookend this project, I would say we have a hard road ahead to figure out how we're gonna wait till June, and then very quickly. And I mean, here's the other piece of that. What if we don't get started, and you get 40% grant in June? And I can't get it designed in time to get it on the street, and DQ takes all that money back? Which is exactly what they will do if we aren't shovel-ready November of '26. So my recommendation is to move forward. Council, consider moving forward, knowing that you can cater this project to only include the amount of loan that you can already afford based on your rates. And if we get that bigger pot of money in, in June that's all grant, then you're gonna be able to do all that extra work with, with free money.
Let me jump in here for just a minute. Let's see some looks.
Yeah.
All right, so let me, let me, let me tone it down. Stevie Steele talks at a more executive level, so let me tone it down just a little bit so I can understand it. I have in place right now a rate hike that includes 2%. It's a 2%, I think it's over 30, with 30% principal forgiveness. That's up to VRA. I don't know what the terms are gonna be yet. So if it's zero, that helps out that holdup. But, so let's just say for talking purposes, there's a mile of sewer line that we estimated at 6 million. I had 30% principal forgiveness in there, Stephen, which that means that the citizens are gonna save 30% on $6 million that we don't have to bill them for. And for two decades, that's what they've been doing with localities in our situation, which have a, a quantifiable level of LMI in, in the region that we're in. So it would have been, and has been for two decades, pretty common. What they're doing right now is telling you that they're gonna give you a loan at zero for X, X number of years, but the principal forgiveness won't be announced till down the road. Okay, so what's, what Stevie Steele is saying is they won't even let us have a seat at the table for principal forgiveness if the project is not shovel-ready. And that's a term that's been used in local government for the last two, three congressional presidents. Shovel-ready projects mean that they've been engineered, P A, all that stuff's been done. They've been engineered, ready to go. We don't even have a seat at the table if that's not done. Well, that's gonna come at a cost, an engineering cost. So the project, if we don't get the 30% principal forgiveness, Joel, which I have set the rates at, by the way, and we voted on it, and they're in place right now. If we don't get it, instead of a mile project, it may be .85 miles. Because we don't have it, so we're not losing anything. We're not losing, we're losing, we're losing distance of pipe, obviously. But to say that, that there's no project is not accurate at all. So obviously, my recommendation is to keep fighting the good fight on behalf of the community. If we don't do it, we won't have an infrastructure. You know, we, we're not doing these projects because we wanna do them, or, you know, we don't have anything else to do. We, we're doing them because it's a necessity to the backbone of Pulaski. Without it, we don't have any economic development. So my, obviously, my recommendation, my strong recommendation is to proceed forward, and we will have a project to do.
Let me ask you this. So as, in the next step of moving forward, we would basically be, once it was, all the design was done, we're gonna bid this out for somebody to do the work, right?
Right. And we'll be, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I won't, you're, you're at a good point. But we will be paying CHA for the engineering, where normally we would, we would be paying it, but we'd get it back. It's, it's, it's a little complicated to explain it, but they've got a, CHA is offering a program for us to get on board with to take care of that engineering.
Can't we just promise him that we'll pay him in the future?
I tried that. I tried it. And you know, he bit a little bit, so.
Our engineering cost on that, we've already taken into account to know how much it's going to be.
It's, it's been taken into account in the rate hike, yes.
In the total. My question is, is that in bidding it out, would we be, since we don't know whether or not that 30% is gonna be there, are we going to bid out 70% of the job?
No, before we bid it out, it'll, we will know. We'll, we'll know before we bid it out.
So I'll start design upon approval. I would start design first of the year, assuming that the whole project gets funded, and you get that grant money in June. Because my, my, my costs are fixed. June comes, we don't get it. I pair the base bid down to just 70% of that 6.6. I'll still have adults to swell into as much money as we can if we get a smoking price. If we do get the grant money, I'll leave the whole project as a base bid, and then again, the same.
So we'll know before the contractor ever starts whether or not the total work's gonna be done or not.
So we'll get a seat at the table if we're shovel-ready. We're shovel-ready, they'll see we're shovel-ready, they'll approve the project, they'll look at the town, and they'll say, okay, Todd, we're gonna give you 20% or 30 or 40% principal forgiveness. You can go ahead and bid your project.
And that gives you enough time starting in January.
It does. It does. So what Todd's talking about, I did bite a little bit. I do work in a lot of these communities, and it is a really tough ask for folks to come out of pocket with money that probably wasn't in the budget. They're gonna get the money when you close the loan, when the bid's open. But how do you float those soft costs all the way through till November?
Here we go.
So I, I've been doing this a long time, and we're big enough. That should not stop the project from moving forward. I mean, we have, we do a lot of work for the town, and we wanna be partners. So what I would do is carry those costs until you get the loan. And then on loan closing, you take all the invoices, and the first draw happens on the day the loan closes. You get reimbursed for all of those costs, and CHA gets paid.
Which has been included in the cost already, anyway.
So that's, that incentivized both sides. You guys don't have to get an interim loan and incur interest that DQ won't pay back, and do, and deal with a bank, and try to do all that stuff. And the sooner I get the project done and bid, the sooner I get paid. So it, it really does set the tone for everybody to be really, really working as, as hard and efficiently as they can. So as soon as I can get the, the project designed, it doesn't, we don't have to wait till November. When I have plans ready to bid. When I have plans ready to bid, when you open bids, that day, I send the stuff to D Q and say, here's the number. That's when VRA sets the loan closing amounts and they close the loan. So if I can get it done in August and we can bid it in August, then we'll close that much faster than November.
Can't I have any questions about it? Again, you're not, you know, I'm not gonna have to, I'm not adding any more to already in place rate hike. It's just that the project may be cut back. But I still feel rather confident that for whatever political reason, the congressional level of communications where it's at, I have no control over. But I still feel like they'll come back around with some positive information. And if they don't, no loss, you know, that's when it comes to the political perception. But the project will be cut back a little bit.
Do you have a question? What is the project?
It's a stretch of Sewer Main.
Is that not what we already had accounted for, like six million dollars or four million dollars?
Yes. You've already voted on it. The rate hikes are already in place. Yes, sir.
But we don't have the loan.
Right. So if it's.
Same as water. It's the same thing as a water plant project.
But I, all right. So you're half an engineer or something, but I thought we already had what we were doing. We already knew what we were doing and we were just waiting on the funds.
Well, they did the P A R, the preliminary engineering report. That's been done. And the project has been accepted. But the details of the project is what cost. So that's the engineering work, how you're gonna get to point A to point B.
So the next thing I would do is put plan sheets together that show exactly what has to happen for every foot of that pipe, whether it's a point repair, whether you can line it, whether the manholes need to be lined or replaced. And I'll give detailed plans and specs on how the contractor has to do that work for that entire stretch for that project. There'll be specifications that talk about what that equipment needs to look like, how it gets applied, what the weather conditions have to be before they can apply it. And then there'll be front ends with legal documents that protect the town. Let's say if a contractor doesn't do this, then this is what the town can do as recourse. All that package goes together and then Todd puts it on Eva and all the contractors in this area that do that kind of work will put a bid in to tell us how much money they would charge and do the work. And it'll be set up in a way that we can scale it up or down. So it'll all be in unit pricing. So if we put a project out for a mile of pipe and we get the grant and a contractor is twenty percent cheaper than I thought he was gonna be, he or she thought he was gonna be, then we can scale up and tell them we want twenty percent more pipe done at those same unit prices that you gave us on bid day.
Councilman Erickson's alluding to a good point. So just for clarity, the water plant has not been designed either. They've went through it, looked at it, got a pretty good idea based on a lot of professionalism and hundreds of years of P E work, that twenty-five million. So.
Just an estimate. That didn't.
But it's a high estimate. It's a high estimate. Stevie likes to work for Pulaski, so he's not gonna be low. The Sewer Main's the same way.
See, I thought that money that we'd already voted on some before me and then some since I've been on was now we just need the money. We already have the plan. We're ready to go. So those were just shots in the dark on what it may cost.
I wouldn't say they're shots in the dark, but.
So it was an estimate.
Yeah.
On what it may cost.
Right.
We still have to go through that whole process before we start on the water plant.
But you're also, that money's already in there, right, for the engineering of the water plant too?
It's already in there, but just to give you an idea of the sandbox that we're playing in here. You're like that design work up there, you're pushing half a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of just engineering work, if not more. So they're not gonna do that until they know that V D H is gonna grant a project. That's a lot of money to put on the line. So and sewer upgrades the same way. There's a lot of, it's expensive. So they, there's planning grants out there. Not to say we went that route, but that engineering's still gotta be done for both projects.
So typically what we do to make sure it's a much better estimate than a shot in the dark because I can't stay employed if I miss too many of these budgets. Those P E Rs literally, for the sewer project, for instance, we cameraed every foot of that pipe. So we don't just guess based on like ten feet of us, what we can see looking in the hole. We're gonna assume twenty percent of the pipe looks like this, eighty percent may look like something else. We actually have a camera that did a three sixty view of that entire pipe all the way through to the end. We did manhole inspections. We popped the manhole lids. We tested the materials on the sides. So our estimates are based on extensive field investigation and pages and pages of a report that was sent in to D Q. They put their eyes on it and said, yep, we've been doing this a long time too. That's a good estimate. Now, other communities, this is where they get in trouble. They'll call a week before the applications due and say, hey, let's throw our hat in the ring. Like, uh, how do you want me to price that? I don't, I need to do like a more investigation. Like, well, let's just see what happens. Okay. I put it in. They get a bunch of grant money. Everybody's like, we who? I designed it and do the estimate and it's half of what they need. And that is when you get into a real pickle. The town has done what they're supposed to do. They've upfronted the seed money to give me what I needed to do a good estimate, which reflected well in the application. And in my opinion, when we get started and I keep D Q abreast of how we're already designing all the way up to June, I'm gonna slip information to them on how diligent the town is being to move forward. And that's gonna be in the back of somebody's mind when they start divvying out the grant money. They're gonna know that the town is already well on their way and took the initiative even though grant wasn't certain. They moved on anyway, knowing that they have to do as much as they can with or without the grant. So that, I hope, did that help explain the.
It did. It was just my confusion. I thought we were further along in the process. I know what our end goal is and I'm all for getting there. I just missed a step in between. So you've looked at the sewer line already, so you already know, you know, this much of it, it needs this work.
Right.
And then the water plant, you know, have y'all, y'all have looked at that and know that it needs this? We just don't have that actual how we're gonna do it planned?
Right.
Okay.
I know all of the things that, I would love to go P E R straight to design. I just can't figure out how to get local governments to give me five hundred thousand dollars to do that before they get the loan and grant funding to pay it. So typically, as much as you guys can stomach is a P E R, which is already a tough ask and you've got so many more hands out and that's a hundred thousand dollars to do a good P E R. So for me to come in here and say, okay, now I need six hundred thousand to design and we might get some money to reimburse you, I can't make that happen. So we do as good as we can with that P E R to be really prepared and then wait till you've got money in hand to take that next big chunk and pay for the engineering and get the bids indoor.
I'm all for stay going forward, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's a whole lot of choice. I mean, we're not in a situation to pull out, so we just gotta keep moving forward. And Stephen, I apologize for that. That was a lack of communication on my part.
You've probably told it. I just didn't understand it.
Well, it's kinda like a mechanic when you blow a motor. He says, well, your motor's blown and then he goes into detail. Then you gotta pay for it. So then he's got, so that's where we're at.
So our sewer and water plant's blown. We just gotta replace it.
We gotta work on it.
I'm on board.
We are making a lot of headway. I've been here for twenty years and we are making a lot of headway. So I appreciate the support of council, previous and current, all the leadership you've got behind me. And as long as you'll have me, we'll keep working as hard as we can to keep things as efficient and cost-effective as they can, so I don't have to drive to Northern Virginia to feed my family, so.
Steve, what's that interest rate, by the way? Did they, have y'all, have your people talked about that?
For us?
Yeah, like if we were to go, if we're going this route and y'all are gonna front the money, I'm sure you're not doing it for dollars at no cost.
I'm probably just gonna work as fast as I can, Todd.
Steve, what's your interest rate you're gonna charge for that?
If it's anything, it is gonna be a fraction of what.
A bank would. Okay. Well, I was wanting them to hear. I kinda figured that.
A bank is four to eight percent for these, for these bridge loans and you gotta go through all the paperwork. I mean, we're gonna be a fraction of that.
So you'll let me know that soon?
If I can get away with it, it won't be anything, but I'm not the C E O yet.
I hope you get away with it, but I just need to know that, seriously.
I know. I'm working with Austin on that.
And don't forget, I got two more partners in the county I need to talk to.
Right. Any questions?
So Todd, do you need anything from us at this stage, at this stage of where we're at?
Absolutely not. No.
All right. Steve, I guess you heard that little dig from Todd that he just knows you wouldn't have overbid it, right?
Mm-hmm. Oh, every day. He calls me. It's a six oh five in the morning. I'm like, chickens don't even get up this early.
Ain't it?
Thank you for your time, Steve.
Appreciate you.
All right, folks, that's gonna bring us to our fourth presentation. It's the engineering department update from Austin Painter, town engineer.
Good evening. A lot of information has been given to you, so I'm gonna try to go through this as fast as I can. The documents that you have also contain a lot of information and I'm not gonna go word for word through it, but it's more so meant to be a document that you can reference throughout the year as we talk about projects. The engineering department really has two main goals and those contain a lot of different things, but those being we act as essentially consultants to other departments fulfilling needs in certain task items that come up from various departments throughout the town. And the second thing is representing the town on capital improvement projects and other funding projects that are, construction projects that are happening. The first of those being, before we get into the projects, which is the document that you have, what I like to call task items are just things that we regularly work on that are outside of projects that you're also familiar with. And I'm just gonna run through those very briefly. First and foremost, the one that you are know probably the most about is the one hundred seventy-seven acres, whether it be finding answers to questions that you may have or most recently coordinating the sale of property for the encroachments. I'm happy to say that all of those deeds were recorded this week for those encroachments. And we're working to finalize the remaining paperwork. Other task items include, we have two current FEMA projects, one for Hurricane Helene, one for the February storms. Hurricane Helene included some damages and emergency usage of the filter plant, our raw water pump station and our sewer pump stations. And the February storm included some damages here in the basement, door trail and the bike park. In addition to that, we're also doing some endeavors to map all assets throughout the town. The one that we're currently trying to conduct are all storm drains that we have and how they're interconnected. There are also some revolving task items such as fire hydrant reporting, coordinating water loss and recording where, how much water loss we have in town, as well as we oversee all gov deal sales, all sales of all assets from any department. Contact us and we will sell them on gov deals. One of the biggest task items that is constantly revolving that we have to deal with if we get a call for it is we manage two of the cemeteries that are in town. Any lot sales, interment permits or burials come through our office. We evaluate them, get the proper permits filled out and survey and mark off those lots. Those are, again, I'm just trying to give a brief overview today. Those are just some task items that we deal with. But the bulk of what we do are the capital improvement projects, which you have listed in the document before you. Within the capital projects, we have one, two, three, four, five, six major categories. And I'm just gonna go through those very briefly again, trying not to spend too much time in the weeds here, but rather you can read through the document at a later time. First category are all of the water projects. We currently have four total projects, capital projects within water, those being the lead service line program, the filter plant upgrade, the P R V project and the backwash tank at the filter plant. That is a total of twenty-seven million dollars, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of total project funding with just under three million of that being already allocated grant, just over, under a million of that being loan and the largest sum being the twenty-five million that we have applied for and are applying for. Out of those projects, the lead service line program, again, is us identifying. I've presented you about this project a few different times, but it's an initiative from the state and federal government for us to identify the material type in all service lines across town. In order to do that, we're doing an approach called the statistical method that has been sanctioned and suggested by V D H, Virginia Department of Health. And out of that, we have currently three hundred and thirty-three remaining connections. So this is also a plea to citizens. If you have not submitted your service line material, please do. You can call any of our offices or fill out an online survey on our website. And so we can wrap up that project. In addition to that, the backwash tank project is ninety percent complete. It says seventy-five percent in your paperwork, but actually I got an update from Stevie and his staff and they are at ninety percent complete. So hopefully that design work will be done soon and we can move on to putting that out for bid for construction. Moving on, the P R V project is an initiative to install localized pressure relief valves across the system in order to put it, put online a Brook, or a Veterans Hill tank that we constructed in the past few years. We had this project that we called Brookmont to construct this tank, but in order to be able to utilize it and to put it online, we need to reduce the pressure in some areas of the town that would be too high because the tank is at a higher elevation than the previous tank. So this project is to be able to safely reduce pressure spikes and therefore damages to our system across town. The final project is the filter plant upgrade. Y'all know most of the details of this project, but this is the twenty-five million dollar raw water pump station and filter plant rehabilitation. We have applied funding for funding through V D H and we are currently working on an application with the U S E D A. Put E P A in there, but that's a mistake. Our hope is that we hear back from those funding sources soon and we're able to deliberate what the next steps would be. I'm gonna move on to the sewer projects. Out of the sewer projects, we currently have four total projects totaling about six and a half million dollars in total project funding. Most of that would be the interceptor project that you were just presented on. Six point six million dollars that has been committed by the state, but we have yet to receive the details, as you just heard. Out of those projects, the first of which is the I N I abatement project. This is an initiative to evaluate our sewer system and where we have what's called infiltration and inflow. And this is storm water or rainwater that is infiltrating into our sewer system. And then in turn, we're paying to treat clean water. This project is currently on hold while we seek funding opportunities. One of the most recent projects for sewer is the sewer pump station master plan in which we received a full grant allocation to provide or to create this preliminary engineering report, as we just discussed, for our pump stations so that we can then turn around and apply for funding applications, just like we're doing with the water plant, just like we're doing with the interceptor.
Very unique project, by the way. So we put that online because it was obviously we needed to and then we got the grant.
We identified the need and then searched for different ways that we could pay for it. And sometimes it's the other way around. Sometimes. And sometimes it's the other way around, sometimes different projects come in different avenues. The next project there is PCB testing. This is an initiative from our Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Treatment Authority in which we are set to identify different locations of PCBs, which are a type of residueing chemical compound from old industrial sites across our system and see where they're infiltrating into the sewer. That is near complete at this time. The final project in sewer, again, is the Plasky Interceptor, the the interceptor that you just heard about out towards Dublin. Again, for a total project amount of six point six million. Moving on to transportation, and I do apologize again that I'm going so fast. I just don't want to spend forever and I'm happy to answer and go in as much detail as you would like on any of these projects. But I've been instructed to give you an overview, so I'm trying to do so. Within transportation, we have eight projects for a total project or total project funding amount of just over seventeen million dollars. Out of those, the first three are bridge projects that we designate as SGR Route ninety nine, SGR Commerce and SGR Thorn Spring Branch. The first of which is the repair and restoration and rehabilitation of the Route ninety nine bridge that goes over Pete Creek. This is in the very early stages. Just to do a little tangent from the projects, just to explain this project method that we have. All projects we designate in four different current stages. The first of which we call approval, the second of which we call design, third, construction and fourth is finalization. It's all the things that we've been speaking about, this process of conducting the PER, applying for funding. That's the approval step. This process of finishing out the plans and specs, that's the design step. The process of bidding out the work and hiring a contractor to actually do the work is the construction step. And then we usually have some regulatory and compliance measures and and final remittance packages that we call all that paperwork, the finalization step. So when I say that the SGR Route ninety nine is in the early stages, we just now started the approval step. What is unique about this program is VDOT has actually allocated the money and is roughly around eight million dollars of pure grant allocation at this time. We have the second bridge project is SGR Commerce. This has been in the works for years and we actually put it out for bid for construction to get to that construction step last year, but bids became back significantly higher than the construction estimate. And because of that, we've had to reevaluate the whole design package to make it not only more appealing for contractors, but hopefully also to reduce cost.
CHA didn't do that estimate, by the way.
No, they did not. And and a lot of that was because the the time length, I believe that that project got started in twenty eighteen, so it went through COVID and there were some many different circumstances that created the the change in the estimate. But that is an example. That estimate being incorrect by the time that bids and being so far off has now created us to have to go back to the drawing board for over a year now. Thankfully, we're waiting on only two remaining documents from the engineering firm and those will be submitted to VDOT as soon as possible, as soon as they complete it and email it to me. And then we'll be able to advertise and put that project back out to bid and hopefully the bids are within the funding amount. The third bridge project is SGR Thorn Spring Branch. This is actually on New Bern Road over Thorn Spring. It's a rather small, roughly around two million dollars for the entire project. This is also in the very early stages of approval. So VDOT has allocated the money, set it aside. However, we are just now trying to get approval to administer the project and start design. Moving on, the next project is the streetscape project. Y'all know this well. Construction has been completed. We are in that finalization step, trying to wrap up some paperwork, trying to get money to be released from the state back to our locality for the expenses that we've incurred. And I've included it on here because we are still, even though the construction is done, we are still in that finalization step. One thing I do want to note is that the lights on Washington have arrived at ADP and a work order has been placed to install those, so hopefully we will see the remainder of the poles installed here shortly. As well as the last update that I've gotten from them is seventy percent of the final light fixtures have also been delivered. So all of that hopefully will be installed very soon. The next transportation project is actually one that we do not have much involvement in. This is an initiative that we have approved on, but it is fully designed, fully managed by VDOT and it's also fully funded by VDOT. And this is to move the the cross banner on Washington where it intersects with the railroad. It's currently the the crossbar is currently sitting in the middle of the sidewalk and they're just going to move it out of the sidewalk. But that is again, fully funded and managed by VDOT. The next project is what I call streetscape part two from Washington to Madison. This is a project that expands on the streetscape that we already done. I presented this to you as well. It has a total project funding amount of just over a million dollars. We have requested those funds and we probably hope to hear back from them within the next six to eight months. The final transportation project is the multimodal plan. This is also a project that we applied through VDOT and got a fully funded and fully conducted by VDOT engineers project. They are currently evaluating all forms of transportation in the town except for vehicular traffic. So they're evaluating pedestrian, pedestrian crossings, bike lanes, area transit and many other things. Actually have to get you in contact with them. I'll I'll be contacting you later this week, but they with the goal of being able to use and create a planning document that again, we can then use as a a cost estimate to apply for future transportation projects. The next category is community development. We currently have two projects for a total of just over a million dollars. Those being Calfee School, we are in partnership with Calfee School to be able to have some pass through funds through the town and be able to support the the construction on their facilities. The other project is the brewery. The brewery has completed construction. All construction is done. The contractor is no longer working on site and Great Wilderness Brewing Company is working diligently to get all of his equipment up and running and brewing as soon as possible. Unfortunately, there were some equipment unexpected issues. I was on the phone with him earlier today and he said that a lot of those issues have now been resolved, so hopefully we will see progress on that very shortly. The next category are environmental projects. We currently have two that are being conducted, the first of which is called floodplain acquisition in which we're navigating through certain areas of town in particular, ones that are more affected regularly by flooding and and how to assist those homeowners and those properties to get them out of the flood flood zone. The other project is the Army Corps Low Head Dam in which the Army Corps was evaluating the low head dam on Pete Creek to remove it. Unfortunately, we presented to you recently the the soil testing that was done throughout Pete Creek and because of those results, that project has been terminated until those results are cleared. We are in the process of also working with some environmental engineers to figure out even what the next steps are to remedy or to be able to ratify those test results. However, we are just in the very early stages in gathering more information. The final category are what we call general properties and these have to deal with the properties of the town or departments of the town. The first there is what I call the basement mold and flood remediation. This has been working with FEMA to acquire supplemental funds to remediate some of the damages that have been found in the basement from the flooding, from Hurricane Helene and more so the February storms. In addition to that, the water seal for the basement has had some issues, so we're evaluating what the next steps are. We've had a structural engineer evaluate to be able to have a more sealed basement. The final project out of all these is the cemetery cemetery GIS project. This is in the finalization stage as well. This was an initiative from the cemetery board to conduct and create a digital database of all of the burials in the cemetery. Typically, our process, and it still is right now, our process is we cross compare a bunch of paper records mixed with deed books, mixed with an Excel document, mixed with what's on site. And the goal of this project was to unify all that, to create one digital database that we can as staff members more easily be able to sell and create permits for the cemeteries. That has been successful and we're just working to implement the data that they collected into our GIS system. GIS is another one of the task items that we regularly work on. That includes updating any of our infrastructure that's in GIS as well as addressing for all buildings that are within town. Okay. I again, I apologize that I went so fast, but I'm here to answer any other questions and I I just hope that it gives a little bit of an overview of the things that we do.
I realize it's been a long evening. I have three quick questions.
Yes.
What are the test results for our PCB studies? You said they've been completed with the exception of one area?
Yes.
Or are we okay for PCBs or we not meet the?
Right now, all of the test results have been, we kind of pinpointed areas that we thought that maybe there were some previous industrial sites. The especially the one that is is remaining as well. There's there's not as much leaching opportunity, I guess, to into the sewer system as we were expecting. So some of those results actually came back lower than our original expectations. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me.
I just I don't need, I just wanted to know if we were okay or not. Appears that we are.
At this time, it came back much lower than our original.
Okay. And the next question on streets, Streetscape part two. What feedback did you get from the business owners? Positive, negative?
A mixture, as with any project. Progress, I think, just in general, is always something that you get wide range, wide range of opinions. The biggest thing for this is this, the program that we applied for is eighty percent federally funded, so it's at a much lower cost to the town than a lot of other projects. So the resulting opinion from a lot of business owners was with the opinion that most of it is free money to our citizens. So the most of the negative opinions were just bringing up other areas of town that the money could be used for, which are absolutely valid opinion and a lot of areas in town need projects such as this. The main reason for that corridor was just to, and I've presented all of this, so I apologize if I'm repeating anything, but was just to extend the Main Street corridor to the entrance of the town and create a unified experience for travelers and business owners alike as they they walk throughout town. The the feedback, though, has been mostly mixed.
Okay, and then the last question, for the GIS for the cemeteries, does that include Oakwood and Pinehurst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, Austin, it sounds like you need to get back to work.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, that will bring us to our discussions section of the agenda with the one item. For Scott Farthing, our attorney, you have exactly one minute.
I can probably do that.
For Verizon cell tower.
All right, so Vertical Bridge had come to us a long time ago to put a build a cell tower on Robinson Track Road behind the water tank that exists up there. And we approved that and subject to working out the details in the lease, that has been a long time coming, mostly my fault, but there was just long gaps in communication. We finally got what we wanted in the lease in the sense of a bond was one of the things we wanted in there, a secured bond so that if they failed, then we have money to take the tower down. And that has been reviewed and finalized by me. Todd has, I'm not sure how much Todd looked at it, but he has gotten the emails. That is ready to go and we are just seeking approval from you all to authorize Todd to execute the lease and the other documents to consummate the lease with the for the Verizon cell tower.
And this wasn't an extension of a lease, this was a new
This is a new lease.
On that location, correct?
Correct. They're going to erect the tower once they get all the approvals from the county, which they have been working on this entire time so that they can start construction. Whenever they get the final approvals to do that. This land is in the county that we just own, the town owns it.
And the simple amount of the, what's the the leasing amount?
It's nine hundred dollars a month for five years. Nine hundred dollars a month.
For how long?
Five years is the first term and then they can renew it. It's a hundred by hundred track of land. It's just a little square behind the water tank. The the real advantage, well, one advantage to this is that we get a site on the tower. So it's a little lower than the priority places, but they will give us space on the tower that we do not have to rent if we need it for air radio systems, for emergency services. So if we need space or we need improvement on our communications, then that's an option for us is to put an antenna on that tower at no cost to us.
Any further questions? It sounds like we need a
We need a motion to authorize Todd to execute the lease and the other documents associated with it.
I moved to authorize Todd to execute the documents and and then along with it.
Question in a second, roll call, please.
Ms. Cope?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Mr. Burchett?
Aye.
All righty, that's going to bring us to our next item is Resolution twenty twenty five dash three seven. It's a resolution appointing members to the town of Pulaski's Board, Virginia Board of Zoning Appeals, the BZA. There's if, I need a motion, if no discussion.
Mayor, we I make a motion for Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty seven, Resolution Appointing Members to the Town of Pulaski Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Question in a second, if I can have a roll call, please.
Ms. Cope?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Mr. Burchett?
Aye.
All right, so that will bring us to our public comment period. I truly appreciate you guys hanging with us. This is what happens when we only have one meeting in a month that runs a little bit longer. And so I have a few different folks here. Just remind you, as I call your name, you'll come to the podium, you'll need to state your name and your address. And then each person that comes to the podium will have three minutes to speak. It doesn't mean you have to use that entire time period, but that is the the time period for public comments, okay? So first name on the list is James Whitaker. Hello?
I'm a little nervous, but I want to I want to talk about the transfers, you know, the the buses and everything. I just hope you don't really take the buses away because there's a lot of ugly people and a lot of people like us, me and my wife, we don't drive. Use those buses to get to the stores and stuff like that. And it really helps well a lot with groceries and stuff if, because we live right up from PC, but sometimes we walk there, but it's hard, you know, to carry the stuff back. I just just hope you don't shut them down because a lot of people needs needs that.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, so the next name is Stephanie Whitaker. If you can come on up to say, name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Stephanie. I live at five fourteen Lowerway Drive and I take the bus for to pay bills and stuff and to get my check for my rent and it helps me a lot. and to get my um check for my rent and it helps me a lot. Cause I can live far from the post office. I live far, so that helps out, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All righty, the next name on the list is Lucille Sagers. I think I said that correctly.
Yes.
All right, Lucille, if you can just uh state your name and your address.
I don't get tired walking. And when you have to walk all the way downtown, get your grocery, walk by home with your grocery, you get high in it. That, and I love to ride the bus, yeah, enjoy sitting by in the lane.
Thank you. All right, so, so Dennis Riggins. Just uh state your name and your address.
My name is Dennis Riggins and I live on one fourteen fifteenth street. And uh, I would like to say, um, you know, I use it to go to work and uh go get my stuff I need, pay bills and and I use it to go to Walmart, uh, going to transit and uh get my medicine that I use to, for my diabetic stuff. And uh, I just hate to see it fade away, but you know, I believe, you know, there's ways to save it. We just need to work with it.
Thank you. All righty, the next name is David Whitaker. If you'll just state your name and address, please.
My name, date, where, oh, in, what, there?
All right, thank you. All righty, if, uh, have a Maria Lewis? Maria Lu- Marie Lewis? All right, well, I've got a, I've got both of them. I have a Maria Lewis first. Okay. That's all right. All right, so last will be Maria Dalton. If you'll come up and state your name and address for us, please.
I'm Maria Dalton. I live in two-two-three Jefferson Seventy. I ride the bus, take me to therapy and take me home. That's it. I love to ride with us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I believe that is all of our public comment period. Folks for this evening, thank you guys for coming out again. I know it was a long meeting for you. That will bring us to our next item on the agenda is our approval of the consent agenda for the consideration of the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five Town Council Meeting Minutes. If y'all have had a chance to look over them, have no comments or concerns, if we're taking a
Do you have any concerns?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty-first.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Joel. If you can have a roll call, please.
Ms. Cope?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Mr. Burchett?
Aye.
All right, that will bring us to our council comments and board updates. I'll start with Ms. Cope.
Over here by myself. Um, I do want to say this past week, I think we all had emails and things with some concerns of a town citizen, but I think that y'all did an excellent job in um getting the answers that we needed and, and go forward and the other things that we need um for that. Otherwise, I want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody as it comes and I hope y'all have a good time off and looking forward to um the lights in Jackson Park.
They're gonna be amazing.
I'm ready for it. All vice mayor.
All right, well, I will uh skip myself for this one because I think uh Ms. Cope stole everything I was going to say, so. I just wish every
When y'all leave me over here by my
Wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving as we move through the next we- next week and a half, so. All right, Councilman Clontz?
Nothing's leaving.
Councilman Erickson?
Nothing to do.
Councilman Burchett?
Nothing else.
All righty, that'll bring us to our manager's report, Mr. Day.
Y'all okay?
Yeah.
We're still alive and kicking.
Okay, so um, a whole lot of stuff going on in Pulaski. Um, I, I just, you know, first off, I've got, I've got an amazing staff. I can't brag on each one of my employees, incredible work they do. All these events that we have, um, if you see Jackie Reed around town, uh, let her know she, she, she's behind the majority of these events, but uh the tree lighting ceremony will be at Jackson Park on December the first. And I think that we, we accepted Brooks' challenge of uh, what was it, Brooks?
Go big or go home.
Go, go home. Well, we ain't going home, so. And our, our relationship with the high school and uh, so a majority of those trees out there were built by the students of Pulaski High School, so you'll, you'll be seeing some e- emails, some more invitations on that. Also want to say thank you uh for the tr- the treat trail. It was a wonderful opportunity, a wonderful event to all the businesses and nonprofits, and there was approximately fifty tables out there. Um, town offices and convenience center closed uh over the holidays through November, from November twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth. Christmas tree lighting, again, December the first, Christmas parade, December the fourth. And um, there's a lot of projects that I could talk about, but for the sake of tonight, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, with that being it, I'll give a reminder for future council meetings is December second, twenty twenty-five, six P M start. Uh, with closed session, seven P M open session. And with nothing else, we'll close the meeting.